Select Board. This is the open session of a special meeting of the Select Board for June 25, 2020. This meeting is all meetings during the health emergency is being held remotely. We are using the Zoom virtual meeting platform. We are required to tell you that this meeting is being recorded. A quorum of the Select Board is participating from their respective remote locations. Usually at this point, I make a statement about the breaking news of the day. Today, I'm just going to suggest that people who are on town meeting read a letter by the son of a friend of ours, me and my wife, David Pilgrim. And I'll let that letter speak for itself or speak for me with respect to some of the issues that we're going to be confronting at town meeting. But any rate, I don't really have anything else to say. Do other board members have updates or statements they want to make or information announcements?
I'll just say a big night tonight. I hope that we all, you know, speak from our hearts and treat each other with respect on this evening. I know it's a lot of hot topics and this is what we do. We get together, we deliberate, we debate, we vote, and then we move forward.
I second your sentiment that we all speak with respect and consideration of each other. Thank you, Mr. Fernandez for that.
I'm going to, at risk of getting in over my head when it comes to the significance of breaking news on the legal front. You know, I just thought I would share with those viewing that we received word of a major development in the appeal of the Civil Service Commission case today. And it has to do with the Supreme Judicial Court wanting to hear briefs in the case. And I will just leave it at that because we have so many wonderful lawyers in town meeting who are already furiously emailing back and forth with their, not just various interpretations of what this means, but in many cases contradictory interpretations of what this means, which is why we love the law.
Yes, whenever the SJC, "sue espante" takes over a case, it's an exciting time for lawyers because something big and interesting is going to happen. Who knows what, but you know, keep, stay tuned.
And we all have to go back to our Latin class in high school and figure out what "sue espante" means.
On its own accord, I think is.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah. Okay, any other comments or thoughts or announcements?
Mr. Chair, I'll just tell the board that the Davis Path Foot Bridge was removed from its location today. Pretty straightforward. I mean, it was, took a lot of preparation, but the, I believe, two big pieces of the bridge were actually just taken down and plopped over onto other properties. So the bridge is down now and now we're working very hard to figure out how it can be replaced as quickly and as inexpensively as possible.
Hey, actually, I do have one other thing I'd like to mention. I was over on Harvard Street earlier today getting my coffee from Starbucks and I walked by this construction site and I decided to go over and say hello.
Can you speak a little more loudly, Blair?
Oh, sorry. This better?
Yeah.
Use my computer audio.
Much better.
This afternoon, I was over on Harvard Street at Starbucks getting my coffee. And afterwards, I was walking over to Town Hall and ran across one of the officers doing a detail in that area. I decided to go over and say hello to him and thank him for his work. It was Sergeant Matt McDonald, as it turns out. We had a nice conversation, but I think it's important, you know, for people to let particularly the police department know that whatever is going on in town meeting, you know, we do respect and acknowledge the work that they do for the community in many ways. I know that they appreciate it. They, a number of them have told me that when someone says something nice like that, it means way more than the speaker may think it does. So if you're so inclined, I would suggest that you sort of go out of your way to do something like that. Of course, you should say nice things to all the people who are providing essential services during this emergency, whether they're grocery store workers, public service or public safety workers or others. But I know the police really do appreciate that.
If Raoul doesn't mind, I just wanted to say that he's been doing a terrific job of the weekly town hall discussions with the business and the nonprofit community. And had another terrific one this morning. And Raoul, there was the announcement at that meeting that someone who came out of retirement to be of great help to the town during the COVID crisis is going back to the pleasures of retirement. And I think he's a guy who deserves a terrific amount of recognition for the work he's done.
Yeah, you said about Pat Maloney. This guy's a rock star from the Health Department, worked for about four decades in doing this work, retired and came back to help us through this. He's been on all those calls since he came back, the Small Business Development Committee calls, and we thanked him once again today, took his final questions, was still answering questions from the public to the very last minute. So he's been a great guy and wish him well. And hopefully we can have some other kind of retirement, a second retirement celebration for Pat Maloney sometime soon.
Okay, we're going to public comment now. Devin, do we have anyone in the queue?
Yes, we have two people signed up for public comment. The first is Sousa Kalde. Sousa, you've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute yourself and share your video if you're comfortable.
Hello. Thank you for this opportunity to take my comment and first in the line. I've been a Brookline resident for 11 years now. And my comment today is about essentially a question to ask your, to clarify your position about regarding the this planned task force that Dr. Fernandez proposed to reimagine and reform our police in Brookline. On one hand, you as a group decided that you don't want to make any changes or don't want to support any immediate changes to the police department's budget because you want to wait for the task force to, that was proposed by Dr. Fernandez to make, to complete their work and.
Excuse me, Ms. Kalde, we're having a hard time hearing you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, we're having difficult time hearing you.
Sorry, I'll try, I'll try again. So my.
Just talk closer to the mic.
Yeah, thank you.
So essentially, my, I have a question about whether the Select Board would be able to clarify their position on their relationship with this proposed task force that Dr. Fernandez has proposed. And specifically, my question is about, the issue came up that the Select Board doesn't want to support any cuts to the police department at this point because they, they support the plan that there will be a task force that will develop their recommendations and then we will discuss cuts or plans afterwards. Now, I've also listened to the discussions online and it was very clear from at least four members of the groups that you did not, that they did not support any cuts. Even the 20% cut to the overtime pay was a contentious issue. So I'm wondering, in the light of this, my question is, would you accept the recommendations of this future task force even if they would include cuts, maybe significant cuts or a major restructuring of our police force? And thank you so much for your time.
Well, Mr. Fernandez, you want to answer that? I'm willing to, you know, say, basically, we would, yes, we would accept cuts that are well thought through and justified. The point of the task force is to make sure that any action we take is thoughtful, rational, and, you know, it knows what the unintended consequences of it may be. So, any other comment from other Select Board members? We don't usually answer questions at public comment, but you know.
Appreciate it.
You can be flexible.
Thank you.
I can add that certainly, yes, I would. The, but I'll say I'll be, I'll be heavily involved in the process and so it's a better question for other board members. But I can say as I've been asked if I can get a charge ready for next Tuesday's meeting for review by the board, the answer is yes, I can. I would, I would need the help though of board members. I'm happy to work on this over the weekend and get to the rest of the board members a, an initial draft, which you can individually respond with any changes you'd like to see. And then a final draft on, on Monday that we could then share with the public and review on Tuesday, maybe have an open, open hearing where folks can, can weigh in. And then usually what we do in those cases, we don't vote that day. It'll be up to the board whether or not we want to vote that day or just take another week to think about it, make any additional revisions and vote the next week. So I'm happy to get that ready this weekend.
By the way, we have to be careful about the open meeting law. So, you know, you should not share it with the entire board. I'm willing to look at it and work with you on it, but more than one person's going to create open meeting law issues for us. And then, you know, whatever, you know, comes out, we can circulate to the board and have our discussion and other deliberations at the board meeting.
Fair enough, I'm happy to do that.
Makes it very inconvenient, very difficult and slows things down, but that's, you know, that's a rule we're subject to.
Right, right.
Okay, I just want, I just want to point out in the answer to Sousa's question, there is some understandable confusion on this, but the fact of the matter is it's been a long process, beginning in February, well before we knew we were going to have to make a whole bunch of cuts because of COVID. And in the, in the course of that process, the budget has been cut. And in fact, the most recent cut, and it is a cut, is the cut that we voted to affirm just yesterday, having to do with taking money out of the police department budget. I think it's somebody correct me, $64,005, I think for, for DICR and then another $50,000 for the task force. And then someone put out, Diana Spiegel, a town meeting member, put out some numbers, you know, just to put this in perspective, this afternoon among the town meeting members showing that, you know, if you look at what it would have taken to maintain services, the police department budget has been cut by some 4%, which is actually a more significant cut than some of the other departments in town. So I just want to be sure people don't get the mistaken notion that the police department has been protected from any cuts. That's just not true.
Okay, Devin, do we have someone else in the queue?
Yes, the second person signed up for public comment is Joan Lankort. Joan is here and your time begins now.
Hi, I wanted to read a letter that I had developed in response to a letter circulating from the police department's social worker. She mentions their crisis intervention team as an example of the critical work they're doing. Yet according to the National Alliance for Mental Illness, the CIT programs itself are just a workaround for what is essentially a broken mental health system. What all of us, including the police department, should focus on is fixing that system. The issues related to cutting the police budget are not about whether the police as individuals are compassionate, good people. It's about the fact that providing frontline mental health services is not police work and that the police department money that supports programs like that should more appropriately go to support the Department of Public Health or other organizations that provide those services as their prime function. What the community needs to hear from the police in June 2020 is, yes, we've delivered these services because no one else was doing them, but they're not police work. And we will be fully supportive of transitioning that work to other departments as quickly and effectively as possible, along with a portion of our budget that supports that program. And an effective transition will happen in a more productive atmosphere if the police actually help lead that effort. In fact, that's the kind of leadership from the police department we need to see. What the police department should be doing in 2020 is looking at itself through the Gare Racial Equity lens to identify and root out the racism embedded in police systems, policies and programs. Much of the national data on the piecemeal police reforms such as unconscious bias, training and the hiring of more police of color indicate that as long as the overall system remains the same, those narrow reforms will not eliminate or significantly change the racist outcomes. As Abraham Kendy eloquently points out, becoming anti-racist is defined by actively dismantling the racist infrastructures that are holding racism in place. And the Brookline Police Department, for the Brookline Police Department, it can best do that work after it's unencumbered and no longer diverted by an array of programs that essentially are not police work. The current groundswell for reimagining the police is the community's voice for positive change. And it's somewhat disheartening that the police department's posture is one of trying to scare the community into maintaining the status quo.
You've reached your three minutes.
Like a frustrated child, it is sticking its fingers in its ears and yelling as loudly as it can to drown out that voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, anyone else in the queue?
No one else has signed up in advance for public comment. I'm taking a look in the attendee list now. It doesn't appear that anyone has used the hand raise feature or indicated that they'd like to speak.
Moving on to the miscellaneous agenda, question of awarding and executing contract number PW 20-21, Clinton Road improvements with Tascow Construction in the amount of $1,225,894. Big contract. Is Commissioner Peppersturgeon available?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep. Here we go. First of all, thank you to the town administrator for bringing you up to speed on the Davis Path Bridge. We did remove the main span today and I'll be able to sleep tonight knowing that chunks of concrete aren't going to fall on the MBTA green line overnight. So it went very well and I'm really proud of the work that our folks did today to make that happen. The contract before you is, you are correct, it's very large, $1,225,894. And it's for the complete streets reconstruction of Clinton Road between Buckminster Road and Dean Road. This has been before the Transportation Board and has been approved as a complete streets design. We did receive five bids that ranged from the low bidder that I just mentioned to you to the, to a high bidder of almost $1.7 million. We have worked with all of these contractors in the past and they all do quality work. We're looking forward to beginning this project that has to be completed by November of this year. It's very extensive, includes improved bicycle, pedestrian and motor vehicle safety implements on Clinton Road, including the school zone serving the Runkle School. We're going to do pavement restorations within the entire limit of the work, including milling and overlaying sections of the existing road, full depth reconstruction in the more deteriorated areas. And it also includes some drainage improvements, some safety improvements, a raised speed hump and raised crosswalk at the Runkle School Zone, which is part of the Safe Routes to School Program. We're going to install chicanes to reduce motor vehicle speeds, curb extensions at certain intersections along the corridor that will improve pedestrian safety. Again, we're looking at beginning this, this project as soon as we issue a notice to proceed. We're hoping to get underway as soon as possible.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Go ahead, Mo.
Okay, I'll be quick. Commissioner, I'm thinking about all these different utility companies, National Grid, the Electric Company and also even Comcast, we just had Comcast at our last meeting. Do we work with them? Because this is a major project that sounds phenomenal and obviously it's going to look beautiful. The last thing we want is a month later, someone digging up the street. Do we work with all those companies to try to get any work that they might need to be done before all the surfacing takes place and those other things?
Yes, absolutely. We've been working with the utility companies now for quite some time prior, they all have our schedule well in advance. And generally, when we're ready to issue our contracts for the reconstruction of the road, that means that all their work has been completed. So we do run a check, a final check with National Grid just to make sure nothing has popped up in terms of gas leaks since they finished their other work before we start. So our intention is that once we finish this road, we don't expect anybody to penetrate it.
Great, thank you.
Well, Raoul has touched on a question that I was going to ask you, Commissioner, and that has to do, I don't see any one of our gas leak investigation forms in the packet. So I don't know whether you've done that investigation prior to tonight or whether you're going to give us an indication of whether there are any gas leaks in the area, whether you know of any. Okay, that's the first question.
That, that form is the one that the Department of Public Works uses to make sure that private entities that are either seeking grant allocations or doing other utility work have conferred with National Grid ahead of time. As, as the enforcing agency, of course, we do that on our own for all of our own work. And as I said to Select Board Member Fernandez, we've been working with National Grid and all the utility companies while in advance of beginning this major construction project.
Do we know if there are any leaks in the area?
There are not as of today.
Okay. The other question I wanted to ask you, I want to go back to the Davis Path Foot Bridge. So it's down now and school is out and we don't know what's happening in the fall in terms of school. The governor is still working on his guidelines and it's very hard to make a plan right now. But at some point in the relatively near future, my guess is that we're going to need that to protect the kids who are going, the high school kids who are crossing Route 9 to get to the older than school for the ninth grade. So I know I've been a pest on this issue. I'm sorry, but I'm still going to continue to be a pest because it is a very critical piece of our plan for how to get students across safely. So I'm wondering whether you have, probably don't, but I'm wondering whether you have any idea of when we can have, expect the temporary bridge.
I have two responses for that. First off, now that the bridge is down, we've begun to look into Phase Two, which is the installation of a temporary span on top of the existing abutments. We're moving as expeditiously as we can with that. I can tell you for certain, we will not have a bridge in place by September. And it's kind of hard to say right now when, when that structure would be in place because there's a lot of pieces that have to fit together right now. We're looking at the many different options, particularly with the Army Corps of Engineers to try to get an expedited project where we can either procure or rent a span from them to make this a lot easier. But having said that, I do want you to know that I've been working with the headmaster of the high school and others within the school department, along with Todd Crane, our transportation administrator, with the safety of the, the school kids in mind as they traverse from, from the Greeno Street Complex to the Boylston Street Complex. And we have some ideas that we are working out now to make them safer. Namely, we're considering putting Jersey barriers along the north sidewalk of Boylston Street between the Boylston Playground and Cypress Street to provide a protected buffer zone for the students to walk as they come down Cypress Street and cross Boylston Street at, at the playground and the school. We're looking at different avenues to make the sidewalks safer on Cypress Street as they traverse Cypress Street heading towards the high school complex coming down Davis Avenue. So we've been working with the school department and the headmaster to try to come up with some innovative ideas to protect them, realizing that there will be, will not be a bridge in place for a while. If everything came together, including the funding and the engineering and it all came together, I still don't see a bridge there before the end of the year. So, but I'll be reporting back to you occasionally with the status.
If we don't get a bridge by, say, December, would we be precluded from putting one up in January, February, March, which is the hard winter months?
Not necessarily. As long as the abutments are prepared and ready to go, it's just a matter of bringing a crane in and lowering a, an existing span back onto the, in place of the main span onto the abutment. So I don't see the winter as being a obstacle to that.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry to be a pest.
That's quite all right.
Bernard, you're muted. Okay, couple of questions. I assume the plan to create, put up the Jersey barriers also includes a heavy police presence there because Route 9 can be a pretty dangerous speedway sometimes. I don't know if you know the answer to that, but I would hope that there'd be significant police presence there to protect the kids.
I know the headmaster at the high school has, has been working with the police department on that, their subject for some of this, so yes.
Yeah, okay. The other question is, you mentioned safe routes to school as being one, one aspect of the Clinton Road improvements. Could you give us a sense of how other schools have, have been, or what is the status of work at other schools to ensure that they have safe routes to, to schools for bicyclists, walkers, et cetera?
I don't have that information right with me at my fingertips. However, I'd be, we want to put a report together for the board that you would have at your next meeting that will outline just what steps are taken at all the other locations.
Yeah, I think just as a matter of information for us, that would be helpful.
Okay, no problem.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm of approval of the awarding and executing of contract PW 20-21, Clinton Road improvements with, with Tascow Construction of Belmont, Massachusetts in the amount of On favor, Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Ms. Skoye?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, question of approving GMP 18RI, whatever that means. Change order number six. I'm sure Mr. Mason will tell us what it means. High school expansion with Skanska in the amount of $71,821. Mr. Mason?
Yes, Ray Mason, Building Department, Project Manager. That's the first, pre-GMP 18R1 is just an old formatting issue. The formal guaranteed maximum price that we've been doing piecemeal will be coming in on July. It was submitted in February and we've been negotiating ever since. Lately, we have been working on the COVID language in the GMP through town council so that we have a little bit more cost certainty moving forward. And one of the questions of the advisory was cost certainty when we move into November regarding the Warren article for the high school. So the final document to be signed with Skanska, the contractor, we're hopeful will be done in July. This item is change order number six and involves 36 items regarding the contract.
Okay, any questions? No? Okay, more approval of GMP Guaranteed Maximum Price 18R1, change order number six for the Brookline High School expansion with Skanska in the amount of $71,821. On favor, Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Fernandez?
Aye.
Ms. Skoye?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Next, I think this is also yours, Mr. Mason, right?
It is.
Okay, question of approving amendment number. Okay, question of approving amendment number eighteen R one. For the Brookline High School Expansion Project with William Ron Associates for additional design services in the amount of two hundred seventy-two thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. So what additional design services do we need?
We need four different aspects, four different scopes of work, Mr. Chairman. One is for additional geotech services and that's just based on time. We have a, an existing connector between. What we're calling new stem wing on Greeno Street and the existing high school. And we found that it's severely corroded and I just don't think you can have a new school tying into an existing structure. So we're going to address that and this is for design services. Traffic mitigation, we did a traffic mitigation study. The original scope of work for Ron was first to do the study. And this will now do the design work, which was, has been approved by the Transportation Board. And then finally. We told the advisory committee we'd be doing some significant value engineering over at Tappan, the Tappan Gym. So we took the project to sixty percent, we were over budget. We did some value management and now we have a good design. That meets the programmatic needs of the school. But is greatly reduced in cost, we also met with Dan Bennett, the building commissioner. And because of that meeting, we're going to have even more cost savings to report. Again, this was part of the advisory committee wanting certainty of costs, so. The tap and redesign will go out to bid. Along with the third floor. And then come November, we plan to have more cost certainty to provide to the advisory committee. As well as to the town meeting in November.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
I don't have a question, I just want to make a comment, make sure that the board members are up to date on what's happening with this. When we. You know, we had put forth our warrant article before COVID hit, that COVID hit, so we had a lot of uncertainty and delays, et cetera. And. We agreed to defer the question to November, but in order to have less uncertainty. We're going to be accelerating design and bidding for the pieces that had not been done. And so that we will have some more certainty about what we need to finish the project. So this is part of it is the taking the sixty percent design, which was too costly. Reducing it, but trying to keep it within what we need as programmatic elements for tapping. So now we need redesign by the architects. So that it would be in a good position to be bid in the fall. And we will be doing this. This kind of process with the other elements, including the, I believe, including the streetscape. Um. And. You know, we, this will just help us to get a better handle on what the costs will be when we go to town meeting in the fall.
Any other questions?
Yes. A couple of questions, if I may. The reference to the corrosion problems and the. You know, the matching and the meeting of the new parts of the construction with the existing. I, by no means an expert, but that sounded like it might turn into a significant. Added cost, can we get any kind of further? Excuse me. Further clarification of what we're facing possibly as a consequence of that?
We've gotten very preliminary numbers, so. So there's two ways I can do it, I can have Skanska do it or I could bid the work. Right now, we're going to meet with Skanska next week to go over the costs and they are significant and it's a good question. Between two hundred forty-nine thousand and four hundred thousand dollars. Which I wasn't expecting on the project, so we need to look at that carefully and how we might proceed with that work.
Let me add, this is in the category of unknown conditions, you know, we had no way of knowing until we opened it up.
I would like to say, yes, for an unforeseen condition, we did started to chip away and. To do a small twenty-five thousand dollar job and as we chipped away, we just continued to chip and chip and chip. And the way it works when you're working with corrosion on concrete, you like to chip away until you hit sound concrete. And that wasn't happening. And to make this work, this little tunnel, you got to hit it from both the bottom and the top. And to get to it on the top, I'd have to show folks how just difficult it is. To hit that point from the top because we have an archway above this tunnel. If you look at the main campus and you look on the left-hand side, there's an archway there, so it's, it can be difficult to get to. And that's some of the intricacies of this problem. And it just snowballed on us, like I said, it started out with a small scope of work and then it mushroomed on us.
And my second question is really, excuse me, is really more for Nancy Heller, our colleague. Because I know that she has the big picture of all of this stuff. And so we've been approaching a November town meeting with the possibility that there. Will be an additional, I think it's thirty-two million dollars added to the project. And then I heard about, you know, significant value engineering savings. And hanging over all of this is the question of whether we will be able to incorporate the Cypress Field. Part of the project. Within the total project budget. Has the possibility that that will fit in to the total project budget now been enhanced or not?
I can answer that question if I may, yes, that was always part of the thirty-two million and the part project has been bid. And it's within our budget. I just spoke with the engineering department and they, they set it up so that. The contractor, if he so choose, can hold the bid until November town meeting, so that was one. Piece of certainty that we're looking for. There's like three other pieces, so I talked about the third floor and tap and we'll bid that together and get more cost certainty. We'll bid what we call deferred maintenance and get more cost certainty. The language I spoke about in the guaranteed maximum price. For COVID will also, if we don't get a second wave, will also provide cost certainty. When we met with the advisory, there just were too many open. Items with not enough cost certainty. So we're going to bring to the table cost certainty and we believe hopefully. Going out to bid within the open market, the value management, we should see some cost savings, so hopefully. The thirty-two million isn't thirty-two million and we're bringing something else. Before you for November town meeting.
Great, right, right, and just for everybody who was listening, I want to underscore that phrase, if we don't get a second COVID wave, which is. That's a scary phrase, but it's a necessary one, we don't know for sure whether we are or not and.
Unfortunately, it's not within our control.
That's right, yeah.
But.
But in the contract.
We're doing our best to get, to get you the least correct numbers on the, on the various sub projects, if you could call it that. Now we have Cypress Field bids, we, you know, with the redesign, we'll get. Of tapping with the value management, we'll get a bid on that. We'll bid the third floor with probably some redesign there as well and the. As Ray said, the deferred maintenance. Which is very important because we don't want to flip that to CIP if we have to, but. That's where, that's where we have to come out of and we have to do it, it's, you know.
Yeah. I know that this is a hobby horse of mine and it can be annoying to be coming back to it. But do we, do we have a handle on, by the end of the project? How much will we have spent on buses to replace trolleys? During work that interferes?
Not at the end yet, and we did have a good two, we've had two separate weeks here. Where the MBTA shut down for its own purposes. And that saved us money because they provided the buses. And it also, Skanska took advantage and the project took advantage of that, those shutdowns. To work twenty, 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 twenty-four hours a day to. To get major work done and the overbuild, I don't know if you've been by, I was last mile Sunday. And maybe Ray can tell us where it is now, but I think it's substantially long. And that's. The piece over the tracks and we couldn't do the piece behind the tracks, you know, from Brinkton Road forward. Until we got this done, I'd asked that question early on, you know, could we take advantage of that? But we couldn't, so now hopefully when the overbuild is done. We're less out of the zone of influence. Which is what the MBTA calls working around their tracks. We'll be able to proceed with the other parts of the building, we're still going to have to have some diversions. And we hope to work with the MBTA to mitigate those costs.
So just so people understand the word diversions, that's what the terminology that is used when the town has to assume the cost of. Bus transportation to replace trolley transportation.
Right, well, the question of assuming the cost is not, I mean, diversion can mean the MBTA is.
Right.
Is accepting the costs, so.
Right.
If I could add. I have a point of contact who's for the MBTA, after the, we're calling this the surge, this is called surge two. Where we're building the, what we call the overbuild over the tracks. And then we're going to build all the steel for the cafeteria above and then we'll be able to go southward with the rest of the building. But I did tell my point of contact that we would, we need cost certainty on this project. And they were, she informed me, she has a new boss. And we're going to meet with the MBTA to get cost certainty into this project. I had to, all I can say is we plan to have further discussions on this and that's, again. The advisory committee asks for cost certainty and it's. It's my responsibility as a project manager to speak to the MBTA on this. And we plan to and she, she knew it was coming and. She welcomed it and hopefully we'll be able to report some good news on that front as well.
I do know that at one of the meetings that I sat in on of the building committee some weeks ago. There was a slide that showed the possibility that by the end of the project, the cost of the diversions that were paid for by Brookline. Would be in the millions of dollars, five million or more, maybe as high as ten. Do we have any idea, you know, what the ballpark is?
If we, if we pick it up and we don't have further discussions with the MBTA, I think it was like eight and a half million and that's not acceptable. And we need to have those discussions and we will.
We need to understand also, John, that now that we have the overbuild done, you know, well on its way, I won't say it's done. The other piece is building the station and the MBT, that's a real benefit to the MBTA. So we want to negotiate with them about the diversions around that station because. That's, you know, we're, we're. Yeah, pardon me? Did somebody say something?
No, I'm sorry, I didn't realize I interrupted you.
Okay, so, you know, that, to us, that's an important, it's an important piece. The MBTA really wants it, you know, because it's going to meet their future goals as well, so. We're hoping to work with them on picking up the diversions around that or at least. Significant current.
That would be great.
Hey Ray, I'm sorry, Mr. Mason. Looking through the materials, I came across your pictures of the corrosion, of the concrete erosion. And it looks pretty significant, you found it when you. Because you're building new, a new structure in that area. Do you have any sense of whether there is erosion in concrete in other areas of the school that. Pose safety hazards? Or is this not a significant amount of erosion that we're looking at?
The way we found this actually is water was leaking into the building. And if we, if I had showed you, it looked like a crack and then when you started chipping away, the problem sort of presented itself. And I think to answer your question, it's limited to that particular spot in the building.
Okay. So it was a concern, okay, any other questions or can we vote here? Okay, I move approval of approving amendment number eighteen R one for the Brookline High School Expansion Project with William Ron Associates. For additional design services in the amount of two hundred seventy-two thousand, four hundred ten dollars. All in favor, Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Van Scoia?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, thank you. So I don't think you're doing the next one, are you?
I am.
Oh, you are, okay.
It'd be quick.
Okay, question of approving change order number two for the reservoir gatehouse project with vintage properties in the amount of fourteen hundred thirty-eight dollars, relatively small. Let me just say. If anyone hasn't been up to the reservoir part, it's open, it's beautiful. And you ought to go out and enjoy the summer weather in those great surroundings, so.
And Mr. Chairman, it's in stock with Rainbow Trout as well.
Okay, and unfortunately, a lot of geese, so watch your step as you walk around the path. Okay, add anything else to it, Mr. Mason?
No, we had two panels and we just needed to provide lighting above the two panels. And that was the code issue.
Okay, any question? Okay. Question of approving change order number two for the reservoir gatehouse project with vintage properties in the amount of fourteen hundred thirty-eight dollars on favor, Ms. Hamilton? I'm sorry, Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Mr. Van Scoia?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, can I ask you a quick question, Mr. Mason? There can be restroom facilities in the gatehouse and when are they going to open?
We just have a little door issue to put the door on a timer. Once we get that on the timer, the bathroom is complete, it has been complete for a few weeks, we're just working out that issue.
Okay, great, thank you. Next, calendar personnel authorization to hire. Question of approving the authorization to hire request for the senior accountant benefits in the finance department, Mr. Fleckner?
I'm going to.
Or Ms. Franconi?
Well, actually, Mr. Di Pietro is here tonight.
Okay.
Town controller and I believe it's a position in his division that is being sought, so go ahead, Michael. If Michael is unable to.
It's not, it's not in here.
Yeah, you know, he is here and I saw that he was trying to. Get promoted, Michael, are you there? If you were there, you can speak up now under your item. And if not.
It looks like he's having a little bit of trouble connecting to audio.
Okay, in that case, I can, I can give it a try, although I don't know a lot of detail about this position. But it is one of our, it's a smaller department and. Busy department, especially this time of year when the books close for the fiscal year and. You know, I believe it's an essential position, it's funded through all the various budget proposals that we're considering. And would like to proceed with filling that position at this time.
Okay, any questions from the board?
I assume this is a backfill and not a new position.
It's not a new position, all these positions that come before you are to fill existing, existing budgeted positions for the most part.
Okay, any other questions? I move approval. Of higher, higher requests for the senior accountant for benefits in the finance department on favor, Ms. of higher, uh, higher requests for the senior accountant for benefits in the finance department. On favor, Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Mr. Van Squire?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Um, it's back. Okay, annual town meeting warrant articles, further review and/or possible reconsideration of the board's votes. Vote on warrant articles for the annual town meeting. Is, um, Ms. Goth gonna present something on this, or we, we have no further?
Well, I don't, I don't think we have any further, um, elements, they all had to be resolved today to, to get in the hands of town meeting, but I'm sure Melissa would be willing to recap and, uh, remind everybody where we're at, and, uh, I believe the moderator today issued a, uh, little schedule about how he intends to proceed, uh, this evening, so maybe Melissa, you could just review that with the board and answer any remaining questions.
Sure, I'm happy to report that the, uh, supplements have stopped. So we have, um, we have our budget motion that we're ready to take. The advisory committee, uh, considered the motion that you, uh, voted on yesterday. Uh, and so now the advisory committee and the select board are in line. Jane Gilman, uh, decided to remove her, uh, motion, and I think she's now, um, comfortable with what the board and the advisory committee has laid out. Um, and so that's, that's where we are, you've, you've taken a position on all the amendments that have come in front of the, uh, the budget. Uh, this is the last item, uh, that, that's to be, uh, taken up by town meeting, and, um, I think everyone's, uh, looking forward to, uh, getting, getting past the budget so that we can flip over the new year.
Okay, uh, I got a, a text message from Mr. O'Neal regarding the, um, Anamian O'Neal, um, please the funding, motion, and, uh, he's not on the, uh, motion as a co-petitioner anymore.
So I wasn't notified of that change, so that's why the, the supplements still show his name.
Yeah, that's right. Um, I, I think he, he's gonna mention that, uh, in his talk before town meeting.
And, uh, I, I, uh, just got a message from Scott, Ananian, um, uh, and there is a distinction to be made here, um, and that's, according to Scott, Danelle, will, O'Neal will second the, um, the motion. But, uh, there's a, there's a real difference between being the co-petitioner, uh, or second being the motion, because to be a co-petitioner, uh, makes you a co-author, um, of the motion. And unfortunately, there's just been a little bit of change going on in the background of this as to whether there is one author or more than one author, and, um, two different supplements have gone out listing, listing a co-author. Um, but it turns out, uh, apparently that Scott is the sole author.
Okay. Anything else? Nothing that we? No one, uh, has an idea of reconsidering any of the, uh, votes that we've taken, I take it? Okay. Let's move on then.
Don't ask for trouble.
Okay, yeah, especially with you around. Just kidding, John. Further review, uh, let's see, okay, we did that. The following candidates for appointments, reappointment to boards and commissions, uh, commission on disability, we, we, uh, Mr. Lee, we interviewed him in the past? Does I recall, or, or, or we? No, we didn't, um. Uh, we have a little bit about, uh, him in the, in the packet. Uh, anyone have any objection to voting, uh, for Mr. Lee for the disabilities commission? They do need people. Okay.
I, I'll just, uh, jump in and say that I attended the, um, commission's latest meeting, I think last Wednesday, um, and was notified that this individual had submitted an application back in December, and he has been patiently waiting. Um, he's attended all of the meetings, uh, since that time, and they are having quorum issues. So that is why, um, I am strongly recommending that we, um, expedite this particular situation.
And Mr. Lee, uh, has, uh, shown himself to be a very valuable potential member of the committee, as I understand.
That's my understanding too.
So, um, also, we're voting to, uh, appoint, uh, Heather, uh, Ms. Hamilton to the, uh, commission as a select board member. So, uh, let's vote, uh, let's vote on both of them together. Any questions or, uh, comments or objections from the select board? No? Okay. I move approval of appointing, uh, Mr. James A. Lee, uh, to the commission on disability and, um, Ms. Heather Hamilton, uh, as a select board member appointment to the commission on disability. On favor, Ms. Ham, um, is, who's first? Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Van Squire?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Next, cannabis mitigation advisory committee. Um, Nancy, uh, Ms. Heller has, uh, uh, volunteered to be on that committee, um, and has been, um, involved with this issue. Um, so I move that we, well, any questions or comments from the select board? Okay, I move that we appoint, uh, Ms. Heller to the cannabis mitigation advisory committee. On favor, Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Van Squire?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Okay, you two are members of these committees. Go forth and fix things. Okay, next, uh, discussion on Open Streets proposals for phase two and three. I take it Mr. Corrine is, uh, here? Leave that discussion, or please kick it off?
Yep. Uh, hopefully you hear me, uh, Todd Corrine, transportation administrator. Um, so I was, um, asked on Tuesday to prepare a memo, uh, for you to, uh, provide the board an update, um, on the, uh, various Open Street strategies that are not only happening in Brookline, but also, uh, locally in Cambridge, Arlington, Boston, Somerville, as well as some regional examples and some national examples. Um, this was last before the board back in early April when circumstances were a lot different. Um, when Brookline was, um, one of the first to look at, uh, uh, reimagining and reusing our public way, uh, to, uh, facilitate, uh, at that time, we had three strategies. Um, the, the, uh, strategy number one, which is expanded sidewalks for essential trips, um, which was essentially looking at main corridors and expanding them. Uh, creating the extra room on the sidewalk, um, extra room adjacent to the sidewalk by removing a parking lane or shifting, uh, a parking lane into a travel lane, um, and, um, that, to create the extra room for pedestrians, cyclists, micro mobility users. Um, the board voted, uh, three to two on favorable action recommendation to the transportation board to advance, um, the, the, uh, the expanded sidewalks. And then we had two other strategies. Um, the first was expanded, uh, what we called expanded parks, uh, which was, uh, we would expand the parks by creating space adjacent to the local destination parks. It was meant to alleviate, uh, the crowding that, uh, was starting to take place and we were anticipating taking place on popular, uh, destination parks, um, which have narrow paths, uh, five to eight feet maximum, uh, in a time when we were asking people to socially distance, um, a- a- as they, you know, a- as they made these trips. Uh, the third strategy, uh, was to implement, uh, open and sh- and healthy shared streets networks, uh, for residents, and, and the goal of that was uh, to create, uh, to eliminate, uh, cut-through traffic and, uh, create street networks, uh, that were, um, uh, for local traffic only, uh, via signage and barricades, and that would allow residents to stay more locally instead of going to those destination parks, uh, to stay, uh, more locally, um, a- and get their passive recreation and their outdoor time, um, right on their own street. Um, since Brookline, again, was one of the national leaders in, in bringing this to the board. Um, uh, there, there was, uh, a lot of concerns by the public health director and the, um, committee for public health in Brookline. Um, and the board voted, uh, five to zero, uh, not to move forward with strategies two and three at that time. Um, the transportation board, uh, based on the votes of the, uh, select board, uh, implemented the expanded sidewalks on Harvard Street, uh, Beacon Street and College Corner, Longwood Avenue and Brookline Avenue, uh, which staff had identified, um, at their April meeting, and then they, um, in, uh, just two weeks ago, at June fifteenth, they, um, have voted positive, uh, unanimous support for expanded sidewalks on Pleasant Street, um, on Washington Street, and on, in Washington Square, um, on Beacon Street and Washington Square. Um, the, they never took up, um, the issue of strategy two and three, um, because they felt that it was inappropriate for them to take it up, um, if the select board had voted five to zero. Um, we still get requests, uh, for strategy number three in particular. Uh, the last one was Tuesday, when a town meeting member and, and a father of young children asked us to close his street, uh, to implement an open street strategy three, and I informed them that unfortunately, you know, neither, neither board is endorsing that, so we're not moving forward with that. Um, until such time as I have the select board or the transportation board, um, indicates to staff that this is something to pursue. Um, so we, we found out that this was going on the agenda for a discussion, so I prepared a, a memo to update you, so this is sort of an update from the April memo, uh, to give you examples of what's been done at some national, um, on, on the national level, regional level, as well as, um, on the local level, and, and you can see that, um, they, they have been implementing essentially what we were talking about back in April, which is strategy number one, two, and three. Um, although strategy number three has bridged off, um, they have, people have implemented, um, the open and healthy streets for residents, as well as the open and healthy streets for businesses. Um, Brookline has implemented, um, well, we're still a national leader, we, we've done, I gave you a list in the beginning, and you heard that long list at a presentation last Thursday, so I won't go over it again, on everything we've done in the public way, uh, to, to lead, uh, locally, originally, nationally. Um, but there is definitely, if, if this board, um, uh, is, uh, now entertaining as we're moving into phase two and then eventually phase three, and then eventually phase four, the, the new normal, um, and as people are now, um, getting out, um, and that we no longer have a stay-at-home advisory, um, and more people are, are starting to make commutes, and we are seeing traffic pick up, um, and we, we're trying to encourage as many people to make those commutes, um, and, and get out recreational time, um, by walking, biking, m- like mobility, public transit, more healthy and sustainable modes than driving in the, a single occupant vehicle. Um, then we are recommending that the board, uh, consider moving forward, uh, uh, with the transportation board, uh, or giving a signal to the transportation board that, uh, we should be moving forward, uh, with strategies two, uh, strategy three A and strategy three B, um, a- as outlined in your memo, and, and have the, the board, um, oversee that. Similarly, have they have the expanded sidewalks, which has been an inclusive, um, uh, uh, process where we're not only taking public comment, um, but they are also, uh, seeking, uh, the advice of the, uh, public health officials in town, the police department, who has a permanent representative, uh, who attends the boards and offers police department, uh, view, uh, the fire department, uh, which has a staff person, uh, attend the board meetings as well, um, and, and provide their viewpoint, as well as economic development, who we've all been working closely with, um, and, and they would be take up specific proposals, um, after this board endorses the, the general strategies. Uh, I do know that, um, uh, Patrick Maloney from the health department is here, I'm not sure if Dr. Chet was able to join us. Uh, Erin Gallantine, who, um, is the parks director, who would also, you know, uh, be very involved in the strategy number two, since it deals with parks. And, uh, Chris Dempsey is, uh, from the chair of the transportation board is also here, um, to provide input, um, in sort of direction of how the transportation board would handle things. So I want to actually, if possible, I'd like to turn it over to Chris Dempsey so he can, um, discuss it from the transportation standpoint.
Hi folks, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thanks for the time to just provide some very quick comments here. I think the most important point I wanna make tonight is just that we're looking for direction from the select board. We know that this is an issue that goes beyond just transportation, it also touches public health and economic development and other areas that fall under your purview and not ours. And so we have been reluctant to really do anything on strategies two and three until the select board decides that it's ready to proceed with those. And if, uh, if you do decide to do that, then we'll engage in a robust conversation with neighbors and other stakeholders about what to do. If you decide tonight not to advance it, then, then we won't have that discussion at our level. Um, so we're looking for guidance, and we're looking for you as the elected leaders and the appointing authorities for our board, um, just to give us some direction and guidance and feedback on it. I will say that I think strategy number one has been a success. We've received overwhelmingly positive feedback from residents and town meeting members and others on it. Um, and we're hopeful that we can continue to expand strategy number one, and then also maybe engage in a conversation on two and three. Um, finally, I'll just say, I know that this relates somewhat to the conversations and decisions you've already made on providing more space for restaurants and small businesses, um, but that doesn't, that doesn't fall under our purview, and so we have not been dealing with that directly. Todd has been keeping us informed about decisions that are being made under that program. Um, but just to clear up any confusion about how that overlaps, this is really separate from that small business program, it's more about neighborhood streets and streets around parks that are, um, not directly impacting small business, but are still important parts of our community and, and maybe should be addressed, given where we are in this process. So I'll stop there, and I welcome any questions or thoughts that the select board may have.
If I have a couple of questions, if I can start off. Um, I assume that, uh, the, uh, expansion of parks idea no longer includes Pond Avenue. I mean, I know it's one, in one of the original iterations of, uh, this proposal.
So we're actually not, at this time, recommending specific, uh, locations, um, as part of this. Uh, that would be, you know, done, uh, in conjunction with the transportation board, uh, the relevant staff departments, and, uh, interested town meeting members, abutters, et cetera, who are interested in seeing that we would, you know, when it comes to the expanded parks, we're really looking, uh, to take the cue, uh, from the parks, department, the parks director, and, and Erin is, uh, Erin Gallantine is here, um, as well as from town meeting members and park users, um, and to sort of take the direction from them on if it's needed, uh, and then go through the transportation board, uh, process, which includes, um, at every meeting, they have, uh, every meeting agenda, and every agenda item on their, uh, agenda, they take public comment on, um, as well, you know, for that. So, you know, for these two, uh, for strategies two and three A, uh, I would envision, uh, if specific, specific proposals are coming before the transportation board, we'd be no- noticing the direct abutters, uh, we would be having, you know, sort of that robust conversation before the transportation before, before anything is actually put out. But we're not, at this time, looking or targeting any, uh, any specific, um, areas with either of these, uh, two strategies.
Yeah, no, I, no, I appreciate that, I just remember, uh, seeing Pond Avenue on the list originally, and, uh, thinking, why would that, why would anyone even consider that, since the, uh, Homestead Park, uh, space is, uh, you know, generally fifty yards wide? Um, but anyway, the other thing is, uh, you know, we're encouraging bikers, et cetera, to, to, uh, commute to work, or to people to commute to work by bike and walking, et cetera. Um, I, I, I hope we're still accommodating, uh, those, uh, people in town who, who have to, uh, use our vehicles to get to work. And my, my wife, for example, works in Medford, um, and, and, you know, totes a bunch of books and other stuff, uh, to her position, or to her job. Uh, so I, and my, my comment is, just make sure that we're not totally neglecting the needs of those people who don't have the luxury of, of biking to work. Any other questions, comments?
I have a, a question. Um, so I notice, uh, you know, Todd, you mentioned earlier, uh, and I don't know, I'm not sure which strategy this fell under, but you mentioned, uh, uh, looking at Pleasant Street. And, uh, that seems to me to be, uh, a, a street that has a lot of traffic that cuts through from, uh, the Coolidge Corner area to Commonwealth Avenue. And I would worry that the cutting down of that street, uh, you know, unless you were going to, uh, have a second way, you know, one lane of traffic and then a, one way and another lane of traffic the other way on a different street, I don't see how that can really work very well, uh, because it's an narrow street, and it is a major, uh, vehicular traffic, uh, uh, road. The other question, and so I'll, I'll, I, I get another question. But in the memo, you say, uh, something about residential side streets. And, uh, so I'm just making sure that, um, you're, you first consult the fire department, and. And because I know my street, which is a reside side street in essence, is also a major way for people to get from Babcock Street over to JFK Crossing area. And it has also made been made one way, because many years ago, it was developed as a route for the fire department on Babcock Street to get to JFK Crossing area and the other neighborhood. So I'm assuming that that will be a candidate for for this strategy. Is that correct?
Well, so I'll answer the Pleasant Street one first. So Pleasant Street was actually recently approved by the by the Transportation Board unanimously as part of strategy number one, which is expanded sidewalks. So there's there's no reduction of motor vehicle access on the street. It's just we're extending, we're expanding the sidewalk into the parking lane, similar to what we did on Brookline Avenue and Longwood Avenue. The two directions, the travel lane, one in each direction, remains intact with no restrictions.
There was Parking on that street.
Correct. Yep. There there was a lot of requests for Pleasant Street to be done under strategy three A, which I'm calling it now, which is the the closure, you know, to eliminate cut through traffic. But what we what we explained is that, you know, that corridor is regional significance. It's a it's a connector route between the Commonwealth Avenue Commercial District, Beacon Street Commercial District, services many PHA properties, as well as, you know, parks and playgrounds one or two blocks off. So it was a candidate, we thought, for the expanded sidewalks. And in fact, the Transportation Board agreed unanimously. So there's no limitation of motor vehicle access on Pleasant on Pleasant Street. With respect to your street and strategy three A, so as you can see in the examples, and and as we envision it, there is no reduction of of emergency vehicle access in any of these strategies. The fire department and the police department will always have access. These strategies, as you can see in the other examples, except for wall fam, do what's called a soft closure. So they'll put out a sign that says, you know, local traffic only. They'll put out additional, you know, sort of barricades that 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 discourage vehicles from going through at at high speeds. But it doesn't, it's not a hard closure by any stretch of the imagination. And the Transportation Board has Deputy Chief Randolph, who he recently made permanent Deputy Chief, has been attending the Transportation Board meetings for, he's been attending for a year. Before him, we had another representatives attending for two years. And he reviews every every project that we put forth, not just this, but every traffic coming project, every bike project, everything. So we make sure that before the Transportation Board even sees this, that it's fully vetted by the fire department, and all of their concerns are addressed before we even get to the Transportation Board. And he speaks at the Transportation Board, and so far, he's been in favor of everything we've put forward upon his, you know, after he's reviewed it. He's been in favor of all the expanded sidewalks that we've done. And as well as the, he's one of the reviewers on the outdoor seating that we're doing for businesses, et cetera. So the fire department is intimately involved in this process, and we wouldn't do anything that that they say causes, you know, an extreme detrimental effect to their response time.
Further discussion?
Okay, well, I just, and you're going to engage in a robust process here at any rate, so that residents will understand what their access is vehically as well as for pedestrian and bicycle routes. Okay.
Ms. Gallantine, I see you're here. Would you like to add anything to the the discussion? I see Mr. Maloney is also here. We'd like to hear from both of you.
Good evening. Erin Gallantine, Director of Parks and Open Space. Just to say that depending upon the board's direction, that we are here to support this, to work with any requests that come in. And as you have seen, the parks are truly essential services. And we have a huge volume of people going to, through, and from the parks every day. So as requests come in, we will work with Mr. Corrine and the Transportation Board to provide service and accommodate anything that we can.
Mr. Maloney? Just Todd did a great job on the summary of of the write-up. Just a reminder that through this process, the the posting, the notices of face coverings and and social distancing are part of this. As you see in the examples, this is happening across the country, where we're advancing in our phases in Massachusetts. And as a result, the parks are opening up, and many spaces are opening up, which is great for persons' mental health and well-being. So this is a good step forward. And I like the approach where, as each one comes up, we can participate as the Health Department and other departments to give our input. But I think this is something that's necessary, and we need to advance with with precautions, though. We don't want a situation where, you know, people think, oh, we we open up certain areas. Dr. Jet's been pretty consistent with getting the word out, educating others to still protect yourself and protect others. But it is a national movement to get people out and exercise, and I think this is a sound approach.
Can I just emphasize the point you've made of continuing our emphasis on face coverings and social distancing? I mean, America is going through a spike in cases. Maybe not in this area yet, but it's really getting scary. You know, America is the epicenter of of this virus. And, you know, throughout the country, we're being very irresponsible. Not so much here in Massachusetts, but, you know, the COVID virus, you know, gets on airplanes and can travel all over. So I I just urge you to just redouble our efforts to emphasize the importance of face covering and social distancing, you know, hygienic measures and and other things to ensure that people realize that, you know, if we're not careful, this thing could get really, really bad, even here in Massachusetts.
I want to know whether I understand the Transportation Board is going to go through a robust process. And I'm wondering, is it your plan to come back to the select board about this?
So
You can also hold a hearing about about these closures.
So so what I've proposed is actually similar to what's happened on strategy number one. For strategy number two and three A is that Transportation Board does have the statute statutory authority to make these decisions. So that's why what we recommend recommended is similar to expand strategy one is that you give them the indication of, yes, pursue the strategy or don't pursue the strategy. And then through their authority and through their meeting process, they would take it up one request at a time. So so the thought is not to come back to the select board again on this, at least, you know, in terms of what I've proposed. The for strategy three B, we're we're supporting businesses and we're doing, you know, some some people are saying, let's, you know, to to, similar to what Waltham has done, which is close a couple of blocks for Saturday or or every Saturday, similar to what Burlington, Vermont's done. And we we propose that that gets worked with the economic development, the other staff departments. And then that actually is, you know, has the same review as the outdoor seating, where eventually the sign-off is the town administrator plus one select board member in order to sign off on those type of ideas. Unless somebody is recommending a wholesale closure of a street, similar to what Waltham is doing. In that case, I think we probably should come back to the select board, since it is business-related and related to outdoor seating, et cetera, and and have the entire board sign off. But that's just my opinion. You know, I'm sure that the other departments have, you know, other recommendations as well.
All right, I'll I'll be brief if I can, just because I know we've we've had this presentation a couple of times before, and I know you're looking for direction. From my perspective, I don't quite see the issue with parks, but I'm not at all against it. If there's if there's room to, if you you and and Ms. Gallantine see areas to where you can create more space, I won't stand in the way. It sounds fine to me. I'm not sure, I I don't know that there's there's a block among us that wouldn't want to close through traffic. So I'm not exactly sure how you go about, you know, getting all the petitions from folks that would like to have this soft closure on their street. All of us do. So I I I prefer a strategy where, if there are areas where it makes sense, because there is extra traffic on certain thoroughfares or streets that are more residential than commercial, then maybe you propose that to us. That would be my approach. And then third, we need to do more in our in our commercial sectors. I I like what we've done so far. I remember the Chair a few weeks back sharing that picture of Moody's Street and getting some feedback on it from folks. I'd love to see more like that, more of these like really wide streets, boulevards, where people can 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 dine outdoors and 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 would be for us in our community, as well as potentially attracting others to support our local businesses. That that would make sense to me.
I want to second part of what Raul said. I mean, I generally agree with all of what he said, but in particular, I wanted to second the comment about the I too would love to see top priority given to commercial areas. And I I think there's a lot that can be done that hasn't been done. And and I also recognize that there's a lot of progress that we have made. I think it was the Transportation Department, maybe even Chris, that posted a picture of what Hamilton's has done. And not Heather Hamilton, but Hamilton's, our favorite sports bar, Village Carter, one of our favorite sports bars. That seems like such a clear example. And by the way, the fact that they include umbrellas. I mean, I I just think these little, what seem like little enhancements can be mean such a lot. You know, just a little bit of landscaping, you know, that, you know, potted plants, you know, here and there among the dining tables. And obviously, you know, maybe some lighting, but protection from rain, if it's going to be bad weather, protection from sun especially. I mean, you know, when the sun is beating down, it's kind of hard sometimes to enjoy sitting out on concrete. And so all of those potentials, I'd love to see them at the top of the list. And I just would worry a little bit that with with a kind of broad brush initiative here to to do some other areas of planning, we might lose sight of the immediate need to get the commercial areas back up and running again. And so much of that is going to hinge on there being active restaurant trade. You know, so so much of our retail trade, I think, is kind of spinoff from from restaurant trade. It's restaurant trade that brings real life to these commercial areas, and we've got to get that going again. And I just wonder if there's any way that with the approval of this board, you can also take a message back to, you know, not just the Transportation Board, but if anybody's listening to, you know, any of the other boards that need to weigh in here. Let's make, bringing the commercial areas into sort of maximum activity with with protections, with COVID, all of the all of the necessary protections to recognize COVID, but bring them back to maximum activity as soon as possible.
So two thoughts. I see this as a natural complement to what we're doing in the commercial areas. It'll actually give the Transportation Board a lot more flexibility to think creatively on how to boost, you know, that crucial commercial and economic development, allowing restaurants to maybe even have a little bit more space than just what's currently available. I also have faith in the Transportation Board and its process that they will look at all of the proposals in a way that is usually done, like in grants. You look at how many people does this potentially benefit? And any nexus of commercial and residential? So those those would naturally rise to the top. The the more people that potentially benefit, the higher it's ranked. So I have faith that the Transportation Board will do its rigorous process that includes a member of the fire department and the police department. So I feel comfortable giving them the green light from the select board and letting them play out their process without coming back to the select board for each individual proposal.
Well, I agree that we should focus on, you know, the focus should be on the commercial areas. We really need to get our businesses up and running as much as they can, you know, still observing protections for customers. I I just would also worry that if we're going to be taking lanes on some of the side streets near the commercial areas, I don't know if that's your plan, that that might hamper the customer base of in the commercial areas. So I would want to be careful that we don't do that, because, you know, I can think along Harvard Street, if, you know, you you don't want to want to have those, take you take away the the parking areas on, say, Beale Street or Stedman or, you know, because those are the because those streets are the places where people from, you know, South Brookline come to North Brookline to get their food or go to the restaurant or whatever. And I think we need to be careful not to limit the parking so much that, you know, customers can't get there.
Also consider, you know, certain types of businesses do need at least short-term parking. I know that I go up to the bagel shop on Harvard Street and and four A to get my coffee beans. You need spaces for people to park for ten minutes, so they can run in and get what they need and go about their business. And I think that those those two businesses in particular, and probably a lot of others, would be severely hurt if people can't do that. Any rate, any other discussion? So what, we're not voting on anything today.
Chris, do you feel like you have the direction you need, or do you need to hear more?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, what's coming through from all of your comments is an interest in doing what we can to support small business and the commercial districts. And again, that's, the ongoing programs haven't been part of our role, because they've really been created through that, through the new process that Todd described earlier, that he knows better than I do. But I think we can be complimentary to to select board member Hamilton's comments. And we will proceed on anything that is about, you know, an open street or a closed street, depending how you look at it, or a complimentary recreational space. We're going to proceed very slowly and cautiously on that. To select board member Heller's comment about, you know, maybe wanting to bring it back to the select board, I'll just say that the the bar for appeals of Transportation Board decisions is very low. I think it's ten signatures to go to go back to the select board. And our goal is always to prevent a situation where a decision we made has to go back to you guys. So we'll be cautious and careful and make sure that what we do has the consent and the agreement and the awareness of neighbors and abutters and other stakeholders before we do that. So I I think it's, I think it's pretty clear kind of what flexibility you want to give us and cover you want to give us in this conversation.
Is there time for one more question?
Of course, yes.
I I'm just a little bit confused by what it means to be a petitioner. How is it that one becomes a petitioner on this?
Respect to appealing a Transportation Board decision?
No, 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 petitioning for there to be change of nearby park or change in a commercial area or change, you name it, on a street, block party type arrangement, you name it.
So so block parties do not go to the Transportation Board. Block parties are actually handled through the the select board in the Transportation Town Administrator's Office. With respect to other issues that go before the Transportation Board, whether it's a stop sign or 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 looking at, asking us to look at a traffic signal, a traffic signal timing. Generally, it starts with one resident will email us about it. And depending on the the level of what they're asking for, we'll recommend that they speak to their neighbors and and see if there's, you know, a wider range of support. And then we go through our our study, and then it gets brought to the Transportation Board at a public meeting with public comment for, you know, for for their um at a public meeting uh with public comment um for cross, you know, for for their their consideration. Um, there are uh different programs that require um an application or to be filed, so the traffic coming policy in order for traffic coming uh process to be considered. Um, they, there is an application that has to be filled out and signed by uh ten residents of the street, or I think I think it's fifty percent of the residents or ten, whichever less, or ten households, whichever less. Um, and and there's uh for handicap uh parking, there's an application that has to be filled out. Uh, they have to meet certain criteria. Um, so, but but for general stuff like a stop sign or no parking anytime, I it it usually comes from the request of a resident or a town meeting member uh or a resident through a town meeting member.
But but taking the example of of one of these strategies as regards parks um and taking it just as a hypothetical Emerson Park, which is a good hypothetical because it's very kind of compact and it's surrounded very nicely by streets. Um, uh, w- w- would the would the board wait until such time as some number of neighbors of the park said, we heard you're considering strategies for expanding the park space by adding space on the street? Um, or would the board maybe just on its own say, we think this would be a good area to try one of our strategies? Um, and if was, if it had to come from the neighborhood, is there some, you know, minimum number of people that would need to qualify the petition for consideration by the board?
So I I'll let Chris speak for for, you know, what would get put on the agenda um coming from the board. I with respect to what the process that we're envisioning at least is that um typically, we do not get one email or something. We get many emails of something. Um, and but, you know, when it comes to the parks, uh, the person that knows the parks better uh best is the Director of Parks and Open Space. So we would actually say, we're hearing from this person or or these people and saying that the park is overcrowded or it it needs, you know, support um with additional space and and does this make sense? Is this what you're seeing? Um, and 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 previous meetings before the Transportation Board, um, um, Director Gallantyne had indicated that if we are, if we get any requests from the parks, that she would actually work with her staff to monitor the park use to see if the if the if the one-off or the ten-off comments uh were justified and warranted before we pursue anything. Uh, before we spend our time on it, because, you know, a- as we all know, there are many asks uh uh for everything. Um, and staff sort of has to delegate our time. Um, so we we would, we would take our cues from from uh Ms. Gallantyne, you know, from Director Gallantyne, who's who's the 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 better expert than we are on that issue.
And I'll just add, Erin Gallantyne, Director of Parks, we don't have anything in the queue right right now. Um, but work uh very closely with with transportation. But oftentimes, request will request will come to us um via um emails and letters. And we have um really great relationship with a lot of the friends groups and neighborhood associations out there that are very comfortable talking about um what's working, what isn't working, and any ideas that they might have.
I'll I'll just uh answer that question because Todd sort of mentioned things coming from the board. In in my experience, in fact, suggestions from the board have actually actually sort of worked as if we were just regular citizens. You know, maybe it's regular citizens that happen to know Todd pretty well and know how the process works. But I'll I'll cite one example. We have a uh Transportation Board member who lives near St. Paul's Street who, as he was going out of his home on a number of occasions, noticed that the Brookline Food Pantry patrons and clients were sort of stuck on one side of the sidewalk and didn't really have sufficient space to socially distance. And he brought that up with me and with Todd. Todd sort of took it under advisement, and then in our latest round of approvals of the Strategy One, the expanded sidewalks, we were able to include that as part of the process, and it was noticed just as every other expansion of Strategy One was. Um, and you see that I highlight those in the emails to the Town Meeting listserv. So um, I wouldn't expect that it would work much differently than that. It may be that some individual board members have some ideas they would share with Todd, but then it would still go through sort of the normal public process from there.
Hey, uh, any final words from Mr. Maloney? Um, and Ms. Gallantyne?
Chair Green, can I just say one more thing on this? Uh, I just want to make sure that I didn't uh create any distance from where Todd is on this question. Uh, Select Board Member Fernandez asked me if if I felt like I had direction, and I do. But I I just want to make sure that from Todd's perspective, he feels the same way. Um, because we will bring this back to the Transportation Board. It may be that Todd is more comfortable if there is a formal vote um versus the more informal conversation we've had. And so I want to defer to him if he has a particular view on it. I think I'm okay, but if Todd feels we we need, we'd like a vote from you, then um I want to defer to him.
Um, I I'm comfortable. I'm okay. I think I have the, you know, the direction uh to move forward similarly as we have on other issues uh related to businesses and sidewalks, et cetera. Um, I, we might be back if other Transportation Board members may want a a formal vote, considering the board did vote back in April not to pursue this. Um, so I don't know, you know, there's something we might have, we might come back like next week and say, this member or or these two or three members have a concern, uh, and they would like a formal vote before they're willing to uh to discuss it. Um, but I'm comfortable.
Great, thank you. Okay, any other discussion from the Select Board?
Well, just to point out that uh although it's still in draft form, uh, a more formal vote on this is intended to be at our next Select Board meeting on Tuesday.
Final draft. Right. Okay. Anything else? Okay, thank you. And that concludes our meeting. Unless anyone has anything else they want to bring up, we have plenty of time to get into town meeting. Thanks. All right.